To be a part, to listen to what was going on at the town council, I mean, for the first time in a number of years, and I saw some of the issues that were being discussed, and I was impressed with that. I'm also impressed with all the things that you all accomplished over the years to make the island as wonderful as it is. And so I congratulate you being the mayor, and you've done a great job of that. And Ryan Fabry over there, that I've talked to a number of times about things that I was concerned about. But recently, I started thinking that maybe I should get involved, and I've got about a minute and a half left.
You're fine, you're fine.
That I should probably get involved with some of my past experience with getting things accomplished and getting things done. You know, one of the things that I see that needs to be done here is we need to do some improvements to the roads. And the reason that I bring it up personally is because every time we have a high tide or the Gulf Stream moves a little too closer to the shore, or maybe whatever's causing the border rise, it comes and seems to be coming up on my driveway, and I'm having to drive my car through saltwater to get to my house. And so, and it's not just with hurricanes, it's not just with a full moon, it's now kind of a reoccurring event. And I know we just went through a wonderful situation where we refurbished the front beach, and I was concerned about that washing away. And with the sea level rise and global warming, that's going to obviously continue to occur until we can get that sea level rise under control. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that, if we all start thinking green and start driving electric cars and not have such a horrible footprint. But anyway, I'm not here to talk about that, I'm here to talk about what's going on that we need to do something about now with access to our homes. I know that we are all coming here, living here, enjoying it, and also the people who rent our houses, if they can't get to our houses to rent, to go in and occupy the houses, they're not going to be so interested in renting in the future. And so that's going to probably affect some of our incomes. That's an important consideration, I think, for Georgetown County. It's an important consideration because tourism is a huge industry on the coast of South Carolina. So I think Polley's Island contributes to a great extent there with that. So I think we should be high on the priority list for having our roads maintained and for the roads to obviously be passable when we have high water. So to take the last half a minute that I've got, I've done some calculations on building up the road. I've built a number of roads on properties that I own, long roads, in situations just like we had here. And I think I could help with bringing this road up to the proper grade and where we'd get above sea level when we have high tides. I've done some calculations about exactly where the water's coming to right now and how far it probably will be coming over the next decade. And I've done some calculations on how much, how many cubic feet of fill we would need to put on top of the road bed to bring the road up so it wouldn't, so the cars wouldn't be affected by water.
Thirty seconds time.
So basically, that's what I'd like to get involved with. I've talked to the mayor about it a little bit, and I'd like to get on a team. I'd like to set some priorities for having the road bed brought up and seeing how we can pay for it. And I'd like to create some goals and some milestones and see if we can accomplish getting some of these tasks accomplished. And that's what I came to talk about.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Your help is more than welcome. So thank you, and you'll be hearing from us.
Okay, good.
I can assure you. Mary Nash.
I'm Mary Nash. I live at 550 Myrtle. I've been a full-time resident for 10 years and a visitor to Polley's for 70, or a little bit more than 70 years. So I feel invested in this community, and this is the third time I've come to the council to talk to about you about 336 Myrtle. It continues to deteriorate at the time. There's been no effort to improve it. It's the first thing, one of the first things visitors see after they pick up their keys and come across the North Causeway. And I really would like to see you all do something proactive about improving their properties. It is not arrogantly shared. It's just...
It's shared.
Yeah. To me, it is an attractive nuisance. I have one other comment.
You're welcome to go.
That is in regard to Mrs. Altman's lovely gift or suggestion to give to the island, Fourth of July, Labor Day fireworks display. I know there's a lot of debate about it, but this seems to me to be a very generous gift on her part and not at all self-serving to her business or herself. She has consulted with a company that will see in every way that it is safe and that the environment is taken care of, and it will be a lovely gift for the community. And I would like to see you all really consider her generosity.
All right. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And the first or tax order business, item three on your agenda is the approval of minutes from our January 18 meeting. A copy of those minutes are in your packets. Any changes, additions, updates, or motions?
I'll make a motion.
Second, a motion to approve the minutes for January 18th. We prefer the discussion. All in favor, say aye. All right. Item four, reports and updates. First item on the agenda is Chief Fanning will give us a police report. It is also in your packets.
Relatively quiet January, thank goodness. Just two felonies that were listed on here. We're both murderers. One was over on the south end of Myrtle Avenue. It seemed to be a targeted crime. Somebody went and stole some surfboards out of an underground shed, and they were, we found the car. The license plate does not belong in the car. License plate was reported stolen, so we don't know exactly who was driving the vehicle, but the cameras did what they were supposed to do, and now we're trying to do what we're supposed to do and find the guy involved in it. And then the second one was, we have new owners that live on 296 Atlantic. They had a bicycle stolen from underneath their house, and somebody, they had left the door open, and somebody went in there and moved some stuff around. Nothing was taken from the structure, but you know, they were obviously, yeah, obviously concerned. Then we have, you know, the weather-related things, such as broken water lines. And it was a nice day on January 1st, and somebody decided to go swimming in the freezing cold water and got themselves a little trouble, but was able to make themselves out. So you know, that's it as far as the police report goes. We have, I think it's in your package, I had to ask Ryan to include for the 15th Judicial Circuit Law Enforcement Network, they run a series of monthly checkpoints throughout Oregon Georgetown County. If we have available manpower, sometimes we participate in them. Done this for many, many years, and they just need an agreement to come around them of a mutual aid agreement.
That's something that town council, I need to sign that.
Yeah, I need any mutual aid agreements that we do with the outside agencies has to be approved by council.
And that's standard.
Yes.
No changes from the last one, basically. Okay.
Do we have to vote on that, Ryan?
I don't think so.
How would you vote? If I was president and mayor, you'd sign?
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Henry to sign the Judicial Circuit Traffic Enforcement Agreement. Second, we have a motion, a second, on that, me signing the aid agreement. Need further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to pose? All right, Brian's going to give us item 4B and 4C, the building report and the financial report.
Building report, there's six items, pretty self-explanatory. If anyone's any questions, I'll just answer them. But basic, basic stuff. And as far as the financial report goes, it's January, so there's only one month where the financials are reported. It's not much information to digest. This time of year, we don't spend as much, and we don't take in as much in terms of revenue. Not much to report. We did start the audit process with Stacy. That's gotten off the ground, and I'm glad that all put together. And hopefully, she'll go to report to you guys in the June council meeting.
Great. Any questions on the building report or the financial report? And let's move into regular business for this evening. First item on the agenda is a request for permission to hold fireworks display in Polley's Creek over Labor Day weekend. In the January meeting, we had an opportunity to do a presentation from Betsy and also the gentleman who would actually conduct the fireworks show. Purpose of this agenda item today is for us to make a decision in that. But before we do that, I'd like to offer Betsy an opportunity. If there's any new information, any other feedback you've gotten, you want to share that with us? Certainly welcome to do that.
Thank you. We did an informal survey of the voters. Ninety-two percent came in favor. One had a couple other options of what to do, one did want to co-lead, and then one thought we should just welcome the vacationers and give boiled peanuts and ice cream and something at the beach, which is a nice idea, too. But they were overwhelmingly in favor.
How many responses did you get?
We got forty-five. We just had a holiday. I also did a, had a picture of where the town survey and the boundary is in the creek. Where the bridge would be, where the barge would be, would be on the west side of that boundary. It would not be in the town hall, the town perimeter. So it would be outside the perimeter of the town. And I'll buy by your decision. I just think this is something that we like to do to show our gratitude. And it would be a, you know, Fourth of July thing, it'd be a Labor Day thing when most of our homeowners are here. We have our honor, Exo Friday Night Civic Association has their meeting Saturday, so a lot of us come Labor Day specifically to relax online and be with their neighbors. And we just thought this would be a nice way to celebrate our gratitude.
Appreciate it. Thank you. If the fireworks display is going to, is outside of the town's jurisdiction, whose jurisdiction is that?
County.
So would the county have to issue a permit for them to do that?
They'd have to, yeah, grant permission.
So I guess what we're basically voting on is our blessing or our opinion of it, or our...
If the barge is going to be located outside of our jurisdiction, then she wouldn't need permission. It would be, or your blessing.
Other than maybe the fallout from the fireworks, and so probably come to the town.
True. It's interesting. I do think we should have some discussion on it, and I do think we should take a position on it, even though we can't issue the permit. Have you spoken to anybody at the county on getting a permit from them?
I understand the problem with the pyrotechnics company didn't seem to have any problem. We would notify, obviously, DNR, CoStar, we would notify the people on the west side of that, the people close to the river.
I got three emails, and I didn't solicit any feedback, and they were all against it. One of them was actually a person that was on the mainland side, said they live on the mainland, across Polley's Island, have a dock, and goes out to the marsh. We do not want to see any fireworks in the creek. Hope the town of Polley's Island can prevent this happening. If we want to shoot fireworks, let them shoot them in their parking lot. That's the one email I got.
I tried, but it wasn't big enough.
Wasn't big enough. That's a big parking lot.
Not big enough.
There were a couple more. I'm not going to read them all, but...
You know, I'm trying to be a good neighbor. You know me well enough. I've been there for decades. I'm not going to really do anything that you're totally opposed to. I mean, I can do it, but I'm not sure I'm going to have any blessings. You know, I try to support the town not only monetarily with the tax, but on helping with committees and doing whatever you need and helping with the town hall buildings on. So I'm just trying to be a good neighbor.
Firstly, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's great that a company and a person with Betsy and Polley's Island Realty and so forth step up to the plate to offer that to us, even though it's not going to be in our boundary. I was a little surprised. I thought it was going to be in our boundary, you know, inside of our lives. Regardless, I'm all for it, and I want to go on record with that.
I concur. The presentation that the gentleman from the pyrotech company made that the fallout and debris would be minimal, I think, is a celebration. And I think people have looked forward to coming back to the Civic Association meeting. I mean, people have essentially been away for two years, and I think this would be a hearty, warm welcome.
Thank you for that. Let me just also say that there's, on town council, there's one member who rents his house through Polley's Island Realty. There's one who is going to rent a house from Polley's Island Realty this summer. And there's another town council member who actually works for Polley's Island Realty. So whatever we say here, whatever we decide here, and whatever direction we go, it's not personal, because clearly, we all support and feel positive about Polley's Island Realty and what they do in the community. So I just wanted to say that, first of all, it's not personal. I would welcome any comments from you two gentlemen. I've got a few comments on my own, but I would let you guys go first.
I think it's an incredibly gracious offer to do it, and at your expense. I think it's magnanimous for sure and much appreciated in that regard. One of the things that I think I have observed in recent years, you know, Merle's Innlet used to do very, very frequent fireworks, I think, every weekend. I don't remember frankly, but it was quite often there on the marsh walk. And I think that the Merle's Innlet group that manages the place, well, Leonard 2000 or something they call it, or something like that, basically decided two years ago, I believe, that the impact on the creek was not good, and they decided not to do it. My only concern about it, doesn't have anything to do with the noise or any of that, or the people that come to watch, you know, we can survive that. But I am, as a guy that spends a lot of time in this creek fishing and kayaking, my main concern is the creek health. And while I understand that the guy that does the show made a good pitch that it's not a negative impact, I would expect him to say that. And so I'm not an expert. I don't claim to be. But I do have a concern about the chemicals that are used in the fireworks, the plastic that is used in the fireworks, the height that they are being shot. I think he was talking about mega height. Yeah, which basically means it's going to blow wherever it blows, and it's definitely going to end up in the marsh. And that, I just think it's a concern that as stewards of this marsh and this creek, we all should be concerned about that. So that's my biggest issue. My only issue.
What do you think, Gary?
You know, I mean, I've been, I asked that for a long time. When I wanted to buy a beach house, the first person I called was Alan Holmer. As a matter of fact, he didn't even have a house listed once, and offered to pay off how you commission to go figure out a buy. So I'm a fan of the Altman's and all of that. But what happens when the other real estate company wants to come do it at Easter, and then somebody else, the local car dealer wants to do it Memorial Day? And do we want to create a precedent? Do we say, yeah, we'll support highest bidder? It just, it just seems like there's other ways to celebrate your service to the community and your customers, me included, and everybody else. It just, it just seems a better way to do it. Right, I agree about the environmental stuff. And then my only other thing would be, you know, all your flyers, for example, it points out the rules, what you can do and you can't do. And one thing you can't do is have fireworks. And if one of your renters goes out there and they just throw off some fireworks, not the sky rockets, they're going to get a visit from the chief down here, and they're probably going to get fined if they keep doing it. So this seems like, why is it okay here, but fifty yards out in the creek? It's a no-no, you can't do it. And these, these aren't fireworks, these are firecrackers. They're fireworks going way up in the sky. So that's my position.
Yeah. You guys said a lot of the things that I feel about it as well. I think I mentioned at the last town council meeting that I have two main concerns. One of them is the health of the creek, the plastic fuses and the cardboard. Everybody says those things are biodegradable, but I think we know that plastic takes forever to, if ever, to biodegrade. You know, Merle's Innlet, as you said, they did discontinue those. But Merle's Innlet, you know, they want fireworks in large shows because they have restaurants and boardwalks, and they have large groups of people. That's not what Polley's Island really is. I mean, we don't have droves of people come to the island and line up the streets and watch fireworks, even on the Fourth of July parade. It's the only one I can really think of that we do that. And of course, that's been a tradition for many, many years. And Merle's Innlet is a lot bigger estuary, and they're still worried about it. That's my, probably my number one concern. And number two, I think Gary touched on it, is a precedence. If someone else comes to us and wants to commemorate either a time or a holiday, and we say, no, I'm sorry, we're going to let Betsy do that, but we're not going to allow you to do that. That, to me, puts us in a pretty awkward position. It's not to say that they would, but they could, because it does establish a precedent. So I don't really, we're giving you feedback, and I hope you take it as that, because none of it's personal. If you're not going to do it in the town's jurisdiction, I don't think we necessarily have to take a vote on this unless you guys think we need to.
I don't think we've ever had a request in 21 years to shoot fireworks off since the last time Polley's Island Realty paid for it.
We didn't pay for it, but I solicited first.
In the year 2000 off the pier. That was the last, but that was the last and only time we have ever had a request for fireworks.
What are they celebrating, how many?
On the island.
Say that again?
That was the last.
And I don't want to make this difficult for the town. But I do think there are a lot of people that like that, and it might be at some point in time to have your blessing and control it. Maybe the town sponsored this. Maybe the town asked for solicitation and do that. And then you could say, this is a one-time-a-year that we have fireworks, and this is the only time we have one.
I think, I think you're on to something. I think you're right. I do think if the town wanted to do that and felt like it was something we want to do regularly for a display for the property owners and the folks who live on the mainland, we would have a thoughtful discussion just like this. We would, if the town wanted to do it.
While you're turning me down, we're letting you do it.
No, no, I'm saying I wouldn't vote for it. I wouldn't vote for it if the town wanted to do it. I wouldn't want to do that, because I think...
I'm saying there are a lot of people, owners, a lot of owners that would appreciate this.
Everyone loves fireworks. Everyone loves fireworks. But it's our job, it's our responsibility as town council to do what is responsible for the town. Because we talked before about there's going to be a fireworks display in the creek on Polley's. We can't stop people from coming over here and lining the streets and trying to find a place to park and causing stress for, you know, the police on the island and everybody else. I'm not saying it's a terrible idea. I'm not saying that at all. I think there are many considerations that if the town were going to sponsor that, it's something that hasn't been done except for on the end of the pier, right? However many years ago we talked about. But in the creek, it's such a different animal to me, because it will generate a lot of debris. There are fireworks displays on the other side of the island, but I wouldn't classify those as Disney-style fireworks. We're talking about 500 feet in the air, large-scale technic, technic, whatever you call, pyrotechnics, thank you. I just, I have concerns about it. You've heard from these two, these two, you know, there's difference of opinion. We don't have to vote on anything here tonight, because if it's not going to be in our jurisdiction, we would at least like to keep tabs on how it goes with the county, if you apply to the county, how that process goes. So we're aware of how it's progressing. I just have concerns about it. And again, it's not personal. It's out of concern and doing the right thing and making sure we don't set the wrong precedent.
Well, I think I would like a vote, because I would...
You want, I think you know where the vote's going to go.
What the town's true feelings are as a vote.
Okay, we can do that.
And then I can decide if it's something I would like to vote for.
I think we can do that. I think we can, I mean, basically what we're going to call it is a vote on who endorses this event. Are you guys comfortable with that? I mean, how do you all feel about that?
I think it's a vote on who endorses a private company or individual having a fireworks.
And the last thing I was going to say before we vote is, that is generous. That is very generous the kind of you to do that. And I do think it's a 50th anniversary, 60th anniversary of the company. That's a big one. There, there might be other ways to commemorate that in terms of either whether it be a donation or something else that's more lasting. Fireworks display is a one-time thing. It's a, it's a display, it's great. But if there's something that could be done that could commemorate it for the longer term, just a suggestion from me. So what I'd like to do right now is just say, by show of hands, who is in favor of endorsing Polley's Island Realty for having a fireworks display in the creek?
Can I make another comment?
Sure.
I'm talking about it setting a precedent, and we as a town don't want to set it as a precedent so any other company, who, whatever, could come and do it, because we've done it. But if we're not doing it in our territorial area of the town, what's to stop anybody from putting a fireworks?
Because the town, they outside of the town. They can, but the town has taken a position. The town can take a position to say, we prefer not to shoot fireworks in the creek that we have half jurisdiction of. And it means that if someone's shooting fireworks in the creek and the town wouldn't allow, wouldn't allow it to be in their jurisdiction, we're taking a position to say, we'd prefer that that not happen. They can still do it.
They can still do it.
They can absolutely still do it.
They still have to go on the island and do it, if they're going to put a barge in and land it, right?
That's true.
Well, not necessarily. There's other ways.
There's other ways to do it. There's other ways to do it. Precedent is two, Ashley. If one, if it happens once and it becomes a three or four times a year thing, we call it...
Betsy, can I ask how much this is costing?
I don't think that's appropriate.
Between fifteen and twenty thousand, depending if we have music.
I just would wonder how many other companies would want to undertake that kind of expense to do something like that.
You'd be surprised.
Well, 21 years, we haven't had anybody.
That's a pretty creative thought to do that, marketing thought. So once it's done, probably Dan might break open something else.
All right, let's, let's, let's put it, put it to rest, and let's just do it this way. I think the two of you are in favor.
Yes, sir.
And I think the three of us are not in favor. Is that a fair assessment?
Correct.
Correct? There you have it. Good. All right, let's keep moving. We've got other stuff on the agenda. We've got item 5B, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. First, we've got three, actually. The events committee needs more locals to be on that committee, basically for volunteer assistance and help. That committee has put on several events, one of which was the Easter egg hunt. We had some others in the fall. We had the Christmas event. That committee's done a really good job for the first year, I think. But Scott Towns will likely take that position as president or chairperson of that committee. But that, they'll have to decide that at the next meeting. But in the meantime, there are three individuals that have expressed an interest to serve on that committee. One is Betsy Bailey. She resides, she owns and resides the historic Polley's House. She's also a local business owner. Sally Hawn lives on the north end of the island, and I think her husband, Mark, serves on the planning commission. And then Kathy Cabbage lives in Georgetown, but she also has a house on Polley's, and she's, she's been along. And then Kathy Cabbage, uh, lives in Georgetown, but she also has a house on Polly's and she's, she's been a long time Polly's home owner. So they're, they're all up for appointment. We need a motion to approve those or you guys have any questions, we can answer those.
First off, I, I just offer that these are great options, I think. Great additions to the events committee, knowing them all. I think they're all, I think out of the box and, you know, we'll come up with some. Some things that are meaningful. So, um, yeah, I would certainly make a motion to approve all three, uh, additions to the events committee.
We have a motion to accept those three appointments. What do you say?
I'll second.
A motion is second. Need further discussion on those three appointees? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. All right, item, next item is, I don't see item C on the agenda. Am I missing something?
Uh, it's at the bottom, actually.
Okay. Let's go to item C, uh, discussion regarding the installation of additional security cameras at new locations. So, uh, I'll just kick off this, kind of this discussion. Uh, obviously, we've got an agenda item later that involves the police, uh, force reduction and staffing and such. But what we wanted to be careful of is that if we had any reduction in coverage, that we wanted to look at additional security cameras to be able to monitor. Attorney, any foolishness on the island. So, uh, in doing that, the best people that are, that, that know where those locations should be are our own police officers. So, um, like to get an idea of what you guys are thinking in terms of best locations and maybe some idea of cost.
The cost, that's included in your packet. I broke it down, um, based on what the installation cost would be per location. And then the recurring cost, yeah, right there, uh, monthly. So with the annual recurring cost of it, so it's, uh.
This is what we're paying, pretty much what we're paying now, chief.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this would be same functionality?
Same company, uh, same functionality.
Okay.
Where, what location are you thinking about?
So the town owns two, uh, Sandy Cooper poles, South Causeway and one in the Burge Nest where Myrtle and Doyle, Sc- Sc- Scarborough Doyle, uh, split. Uh, that would, it provides light over an area, especially for nighttime. So it'd be, give us beneficial, uh, lighting. Um, and the meters are already there, so we wouldn't have to worry about electricity. The only thing we would have to worry about is adding a cable connection for the cameras.
So is that right at the Y there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I guess you, is it nature park or is it?
Yeah. Do you get traffic coming and going or just one way?
Uh, you would say you would, if the cameras are focused properly, uh, you would get any traffic, uh, by Hazard Street, turning onto Hazard. You'd get the traffic going up Myrtle and going up Doyle. So you should get most, you know, just about every part of that intersection. Um, you can't get to the south end without passing that camera, really. Um, you know, the, if somebody turns left on Hazard, it would not be as obviously as, um, you know, uh. I have to talk to them and see if they can zoom in a little bit, but you know, obviously if you're going underneath the camera, you're gonna be a little bit more visible than making the left onto Hazard Street. But I think we could work, make a, a workaround on that. Um, on the South Causeway, there's a light right above that, uh, big, um, electric box right there. Um, we may have to turn back some of those trees a little bit to get, uh, northbound or southbound on Myrtle. But, uh, so we, we have this intersection covered with cameras from this building. So we can see basically everything coming out on or off the island, not so much on pavilion, but at this intersection. That location would give us the South Causeway intersection and people going north or south from there. And then go ahead.
License plate detection connected to the database, the whole nine yards.
Right. So license plate readers don't give us, um, anything but a picture of the car and the license plate. Doesn't necessarily give us where they leave, once they get off the island, where they come or, you know, it, it, it's just one more layer, um, that we've got of tools that we could use. And then obviously we don't really have anything north of First Street, so we would like to put one, uh, if possible, at Third and, uh, Atlantic, but Third and Myrtle, probably Third and Atlantic.
So are you saying the security camera is the same thing as the license plate read?
No, sir.
Two different things?
Yes.
So is it? Both of those on here?
No, we're not talking about adding a license plate reader. No, that's, those are, those work well for us where they're at and, uh, we're not looking to add anything else more to the.
So these are just?
Oh, no, these are just closed circuit video cameras or not closed circuit, but you know, video cameras.
I'm just curious about this. Can, um, can you patrol and see it in your car or they can't?
Now that the wifi connection is really not strong enough to be monitoring as many cameras as, uh, we can from a hard, hard line.
Nice.
Well, they could, you know, we could actually see it from our phone. So that actually works out better where, uh, if we have an incident, we can actually go back on our phone and, and actually view. Up to about twenty-eight days worth of video if we add to, um, on our phone.
But you can't view it on your phone, like if somebody's on the south end.
On a live, uh, live view. Yeah, you can on your phone.
Can you, it's like if you had an iPad and you do it that way, then.
Right.
But that'd be a big benefit. If somebody's up here and you wanna look at what's going on down at the south end, you could just look real quick.
Cause yeah, we, I mean, when we were patrolling at night, that's we would, you know, the guys would, if we were up here and we'd pull up the south end cameras to see if somebody was parked down there after hours. And you go down there and investigate it and if issues, if necessary.
And you can tell the system what camera you wanna see.
Right.
Yeah.
Kind of, I mean, I, I'm assuming you all have cameras that your businesses or have it. Very similar to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. So you're suggesting three cameras at twenty-nine hundred dollars or thirty-four, thirty-two, twenty-four?
Uh, I was asked to pick out locations. That's.
What, what do you, what do you see? What do you think? Where's a good start?
I mean, if, um, definitely Burge Nest and, you know, flip a coin on, uh, South Causeway and, and, um, the north end camera. Um, you know, the, the north end camera would give us that extra quality up there, uh, you know, up on Atlantic and, uh, Third Street.
But thinking about it, and I, I hear you, but thinking about it from an access standpoint, since we got two, only got two causeways to get.
I know, totally, yeah.
I'm wondering whether.
I know.
Cause why would it take?
I mean, I've spoken to Jono, our investigator about it and he believes that that South Causeway, uh, camera was probably be a little bit more important than the camera up there.
Okay.
Just because it gives, like you said, it gives us all access.
Yeah. And where would you mount that?
They, they have, we have a pole, right? Is it, do we own that pole? Is that Sandy Cooper pole?
We rent it.
We rent, we leave.
You mean on that street when you come onto the island, a pole across the street?
Right.
Right there by the, by the electric.
Yeah, there's a street light on there already now.
Hmm. Yeah.
So if you did two, you would do that and.
Correct.
I like it myself. I mean, I.
Kinda do too.
Um, I think that's what we said we were gonna do is if we're gonna come back on coverage, that we would add security in this fashion. And I think it's.
So it's a one time cost of twenty-nine hundred dollars per camera and then a two-hundred-and-seventy-dollar cost annually per camera?
Yeah.
Per camera.
There we're talking about. Yeah, you know, with electricity, you know, electricity and, and have that.
Is that a fairly quick, uh, installation as far as project?
Since we wouldn't have to do the meters, uh, it'd be a lot quicker, yeah. Third Street would require putting a meter in, surveying a location than having it.
I guess what I was asking is it a hardship to, to do that?
There's a lead time, early time.
Uh, no, they're usually pretty responsive, that company. Who would do, really be coordinating between Spectrum and, uh, and that, yeah, but.
Month or two?
Yeah, it'd take, it'd be done about a month or so, yeah.
I wanna understand the cost. The, the twenty-nine hundred is the camera and equipment, basically. The thirty-two hundred and forty, that's the annual cost.
If you look at the bottom, the recurring monthly cost, that's just the annual cost of months. So you're paying for.
Okay.
Power.
For three cameras. That is per camera.
And one of the, and one of the services this company provides is that we have, uh, an incident and we need, and we don't have the manpower to, uh, sit down there, look at these cameras. They'll send somebody down here and we tell them what we're looking for or we'll sit there with them and they'll sit there and pull up what we need. Um, so it might take us a little bit of time and effort, you know, from an investigator's standpoint.
Well, I'm in favor of the two easy ones. It sounds like that's your two priorities.
Me too. How do y'all feel about it?
I agree.
How about we have?
Yeah, if we're not gonna have coverage.
How about we have a motion to, um, those two cameras at those locations?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the two locations that the chief has suggested.
South Causeway. At the cost, at the cost, provided in the packet.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Chief, I want to ask you one thing. So I don't have one of the door.
You seconded it, right?
I seconded. You wanna go and vote the first one?
No, 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 this is discussion.
So I got, it's a separate question.
Okay. Uh, motion is second to approve installation of two cameras at the locations that the chief specified. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
But, but those door, those rings, are you an advocate of those? They seem to work pretty good.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I have them on, on my house. Well, CPI I have, but I don't ring, but, um, I, I would advocate for anybody, especially the amount of time that these houses are acting, especially during the, uh, off season.
If we, uh, we had a campaign here and even thought about a little, little subsidy to encourage people to do it. We had three or four hundred on the island. Would that be a big deterrent, you think?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'd love to see.
I think it's a great idea.
Um, yeah, but I, 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 you know, I, I don't think as a police department, we, I could go out and solicit ring as a, as a vendor.
That technology.
Yeah, that technology, yeah, yeah. And, uh, you know, a lot of these companies, Ring, CPI, whoever it might be, they have, uh, community programs or, or, um, prevention programs that they might offer. Especially if they had a hundred, two hundred.
Right. My, my son worked for a company where they did old subsidies and they bought them at a much better price and it sounded like a great idea to me. It seemed like if you, if there were four hundred cameras on his island, that if you were a crook, you'd probably go somewhere else.
I, I think it's a great idea.
Could we, uh, ask Ryan to look into a negotiation for a group buy? Um, to see what kind of cut we could get, kind of.
Are you thinking something kind of like we do with sand fences? Kind of, kind of.
The problem we're gonna run into though, those like Ring and Google Nest and all these other, uh, you know, platforms you could use. The, the cost of the camera is fine, but then you have to pay for the monthly.
Subscription.
Right, to, to record it and maintain that debt. So we could, we could find a way to get it in their hands, but if they're not willing to pay for it.
Mr. Eberfin, you would thank that. Just an incentive.
Well, you know, just get all, get all the information and then present it to people.
And the chief says, you can strongly endorse it. That, that sells me.
Maybe there's a way to have a little time meeting or something where you present it as a notion to as many people as want to hear it.
Or you could set up as a, almost like a grant where people say, okay, you go and you, just whatever the camera is. Um, and you show that you're gonna, you've got a, you're long subscription or you're gonna maintain that so we can tap into it. You can supply us with, uh, video if requested. You know, we'll offset it with a two-hundred-dollar grant or a hundred fifty, like whatever it might.
That would help you guys a lot.
Have those videos. We've had people on the island who have those types of, uh, services and they've been helpful. Although, um, you know, we actually just recently, um, not, not, obviously they have more security cameras, but the folks at the Pelican, you know, they have their cameras. One of the couple of the cameras focused right on Myrtle Avenue and, uh, could help us out on our investigation recently.
And we can get, um, Brother Charles to make sure all the crooks know that we've got them out here.
That's right.
Put in the crime report.
So true.
All right, let's, uh, unless there's any more comments or questions about that. Thanks for the discussion on that. It's helpful. I think that'll be a good addition to the island. Uh, item five D, uh, approve accommodations tax committees proposed twenty-twenty-two marketing budget. Ryan, what's that with my?
So a copy of the budget that was approved by the accommodations tax committee at their November ninth, twenty, twenty-one meeting is in your packet. That is the marketing budget that they unanimously approved and it is, uh, as a court counsel for approval.
Does this deviate anyway from what's been done in the past?
So the, the only deviation would be the, the total revenue. So if you look at, uh, you look at their marketing budget, you'll see, uh, thirty percent tax estimate. But that is based off of us, um, collecting far less any tax revenue. So that was based on what we collected previous year, which was about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. So that thirty percent would be around seventy-eight thousand. We actually ended up collecting four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. Um, so that number is about fifty-six thousand dollars higher. So the only change is they've got a lot more money to spend than what they actually budget. Um, but they've got two years to spend it, so there's no. Our next meeting, which will be next month, they'll, uh, they'll talk about where they wanna spend that extra fifty-six thousand dollars. And that will also change the, uh, uh, their carryover estimate. They, they budget a certain amount and a certain amount they're gonna carry over. If the same amount comes in this year. Um, and they figure the same amount to carry over, that number will be higher by fifty-six thousand dollars. Cause the budgeting number we used was the seventy-eight thousand dollars based on the number before, the previous year. So in a nutshell, the only deviation from this is we have about fifty-six thousand dollars more to spend than what they had budgeted. And if we have the same numbers this year as we did last year, that'll be another fifty-six thousand dollars. And our carryover number.
Got it.
So do they, do they need that additional funding in your mind?
I mean, well, it's statutory, I mean, that's, the state says we'd spend thirty percent of our state A tax revenue on promotion of the island as a vacation destination. So they have to spend it, but they have two years to spend it. So. But this budget was approved in November. We didn't get the check for that final state A tax collection until two weeks ago. So we would not, we did not know until two weeks ago that the final number was gonna be that much higher.
So are we, are we locking into this for that incremental funds or that would be open for discussion later?
No, all your, I mean, so you're just approving their spend.
Right.
And then when they get together, they will, they will have fifty-six thousand dollars more. They'll probably just put it in a reserve. Like I said, they have two years to.
We have a suggestion how we wanna spend it. We could, I guess, when we go here and say, here's our suggestion.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could make a recommendation.
Yeah. So basically what we're discussing right now is not how much they get. It's, it's stipulated. We, we're just, uh, discussing how they spend it. And if you guys are okay with how they spend it, then we're, um, we're good.
Well, I just remember Sarah making a comment, you've done it for a couple of years in a row.
And it's been corrected.
It has.
I mean, I, I, we get the triple A magazine and the picture of the rocks, you know, you've seen it. It's changed.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And that's, I have no more problem with it.
Yeah. Okay. So we need a, uh, we need a vote to approve this budget for the A tax committee.
My motion.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right. Next up we have, Ryan's gonna give us an update on the U S Army Corps project, sand fence and damn, and dune plantings.
So I sent out a update to all the property owners, uh, back in January, informing everyone that, uh, the sand fence. Project on the south end is going to start on February fifteenth, uh, but that is now been pushed back. So it's gonna start next week. So it's two weeks later than, than what was, uh, anticipated. But, uh, no. So it should only take about six weeks to complete it. Let's do the sand fence first, um, and then about two weeks later, they'll do all the dune plantings. Uh, the south end parking lot will not have to be closed. They're only gonna need about twenty percent of it in the corner of the parking lot. So it'll remain open. Um, and I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty robust. I mean, they plant the entire dune and then, I mean, like thirty feet in front of it. And we're talking very dense vegetation. It's not like you see out there. Oh, yeah.
That's incredible. And it's mostly like sea oats?
It's sea, uh, whatever the two technical, there's two of them. There's sea oats. I forget what the scientific name is for it. Then there's another, another plant.
Ryan, you know who the vendors are?
So the vendor is a, it's a company out of the Carolinas. I cannot remember the name of the.
I'm just curious. I love, I mean, wait, I'll be like, I'd love to put more out front of my house.
Yeah.
If I had, if I knew you to call, we could put that out there. I think a lot of people might add it.
But, uh, be with them next week when they get in town and I'll see how they wanna go, but.
That'd be great.
Just send in their information.
That's good. Might put more out there.
What's there, what's there now, what's been put down is doing really well. I mean, it's working. At least what's in front of our property is working. Looks like it's working very well. Uh, what are the questions y'all have about that project? If none, we'll move to page two. Item five F, discussion regarding proposal from CSC for creek dredging study. As you recall, CSC came and presented to us last month and gave us an estimate on what a study would cost. What are you guys thinking in that respect?
So what, what I'm thinking is we, we certainly know about it, but it occurred to me that so much community effort, particularly the beachfront community. So, you know, we, as, as you mentioned, I asked the question, if we dredge the north end before you get Litchfield, the sand from Litchfield is gonna fill it in. And we know that the people, uh, our neighbors to the south, the Prince George, uh, they're interested in what we do as well. So it, it seems to me we're, our approach, instead of spending this money right now, let's go see what the last. it, it seems to me we're, our approach, instead of spending this money right now, let's go see what the last study was and really understand that, and then, is it possible we could try to drive an effort where we create a, a community effort, where we get some people from Prince George and we get some people from the Spitty Litchfield? We get some people here from Paulies, it'd be a great one. And we try to figure out, um, you know, what, what's a plan that makes everybody happy? Because it, it wouldn't, wouldn't be good if we did everything on the south end where you are, Sarah, and then, Prince George raises their hands and says, no, 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 we don't want that. It's, it bites us on it. We, we, we need to, and everybody's got the same problem, so it seems like, if we all were together as basically three communities, then we have a better chance of going and trying to get state funds and so on, and we, and don't forget, we've got a, sitting governor who lives on the creek right, or has a house right over on the creek. And so that gives us more leverage and, um, to me, it sounds like a longer term, more practical approach, than just getting a study that we're gonna have a hard time funding.
Has South Litchfield, I guess, talked about their problem there, or are they just looking at their beachfront? Because I understood that South Litchfield is getting ready to start their beach project and they've assessed every owner like, oh, I don't know, three hundred thousand dollars?
I think that was the.
Or something.
I don't know.
Right, right, but I don't know that you're gonna get anybody from Litchfield.
You, we don't know, we don't know till we ask, but I know they all use that creek. If you live up on those canals, you use that creek.
I understand that there's always some expressed, already been some expressed interest.
We had lunch with the, um, Litchfield P O A president, uh, several months, it's been a while, but he definitely expressed an interest in working with us.
I know Prince George.
Okay.
And Prince George has as well.
I, I think you, the real beauty of your idea here is that we avoid, not in my backyard, we avoid somebody fighting us against it, which typically happens as opposed to joining in the effort and benefiting from it. So I think it's a great idea and well worth delaying this, um, decision on the proposal until we can figure that out.
What do you think?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Who meets with whom and when? It's your idea. That's, I, I forgot, Gary. I think that's a wonderful committee.
I'll be happy to report back next time, uh, with me and just reach out to a few people and just maybe have a preliminary conversation and then we, maybe we come back and say, yeah, let's participate.
Do you know if, if this engineering company is working with both of them?
I think they're working.
I know that they're working with Prince George, but I don't know who's doing the work.
I don't know.
Do you know, Ryan, who's doing the work?
Their beach nursery.
Beach nursery, yeah.
They are doing their beach nursery.
And so, have we, anybody read that report from the last time? Because I think it probably adds irrelevant information.
It's in a box. Do you want it? Got a layer of mold?
I got an email too.
We might, me and Preston went to the storage facility two weeks ago, trying to uncover it, and we found, it's from two thousand and five.
Uh huh.
And, uh.
So they didn't get eaten by the.
No, but it definitely at some point got wet. But we do have it.
Bill, I was just sending you electronic words.
No, I wish I, wish I knew that existed.
Hey, nowhere to go.
Yeah. So we're going to table this for now. Obviously, we're having a discussion and we will put it on the agenda for March and have, uh, see if we have an update. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, uh, item five D, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one, ordinance amending the twenty twenty two annual budget. We discussed this at length at the last meeting. Need discussions, thoughts, changes, additions, issues, motions, concerns?
Same as it was last month, the only difference is we added thirty five thousand dollars for the pilot projects for storm drainage on the, on the north end, or south end, I apologize, Bird's Nest, and then, uh, based on the decision you made about the security cameras, uh, you have to also add in eleven thousand five hundred dollars for, that would be installation of it in ten months. Of operating cost. End of March.
Officially, yeah, it's like starting week in March. You have another meeting?
Yeah, that's good. All right, what are you guys thinking, y'all? There's been a lot of massaging and consternation and discussions and decisions made prior, so obviously this makes tonight a little bit easier, but, if there's any other changes, now's the time to bring it up, or we move forward with a, a budget?
Just to clarify, all these changes result from the decision not to replace a retiring officer.
To a traditional crew.
Okay.
But it also has to be amended to include the cameras.
Right. Do, should we do that and vote on it next time?
No, you can add it now. Eleven thousand, you can make any change you want between.
Yeah.
So read it as is, just, uh, with the addition of eleven thousand five hundred for the camera.
And eleven thousand two hundred and three.
Two.
Right, so the price I gave you was, uh, sixty two hundred roughly for, per location. And so eleven five is based on the two at sixty two hundred, but removing two months of operating costs, because obviously we're not gonna have it up and running for January, because it's already passed. And February will never get done time.
Okay, okay, there you go. You just got the canvas, the camera costs and the, and the installation costs and then the recurring two seventy.
Nine thousand dollars, not cheap.
And that could.
That's an estimate.
An estimate.
Some negotiation from them there.
Yeah, we can approve it and then if it's under, then we, we amend the budget again. So, who wants to make?
That's gonna give me a run for money. That was a lot of steals there here.
We haven't, we haven't seen that, so we don't know. All right, I'll make a motion and I'll second. So the motion is to approve, uh, the twenty twenty two annual budget with an amendment for, uh, adding eleven thousand five hundred dollars for installation of two security cameras.
So the budget is already passed, we just passed in this ordinance, which is an amendment to the twenty.
Correct.
For ordinance twenty twenty zero dash zero one.
Got it. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hallelujah. All right, item six, any comments from our council members?
I have one to offer. And it kind of goes a little bit hand in hand with the conversation that we heard earlier from, um, from Tom. We do have a project that the S C D O T is taking on to repave our roads. Um, and so I've gotten some information over the last couple of days that I didn't have before about how that is going to go. So, the Department of Transportation has broken that paving into two halves. Contract will take the road from this intersection, the North Causeway, all the way to, past Brook, past Hazard, but it follows Myrtle Avenue, so branches off there and continues and intersects into your road.
Richard.
Richard. Um, so that's contract one. That has been awarded to a company in Conway. And, um, and that's the good news, it's funded, it's awarded. Let me come back to that in terms of timing. The second contract that they've got in mind takes the paving from this causeway, down to First Street, over to, um, Atlantic and all the way up to the.
The gate.
The gate. That has been funded. We didn't know that until this morning. That contract has been funded, but not awarded, and the reason for that is they tried to award it to the same contractor in Conway, but he wanted it up his unit prices, and so, they said, nah, we're not gonna go for that. So now they're back into negotiations with several other suppliers. I'm assured by S C D O T that it will happen. So both of those contracts are gonna take place. Um, a couple of concerns that we had were, a- as Tom, you had said, what are they gonna, what are they planning to do when they do that paving? Are they gonna eat the road surface down and, and just put, put, uh, paving on it so we don't get any increase in the height of the road? Again, I was assured today that, no, their game plan was to do very light, uh, resurfacing or a very light scrubbing of the existing surface for adhesion, but then to add the new paving on top of the existing road, which is, benefits us from two perspectives. One is, we've got those crazy bumps where the manholes are, and we've had those for years, so, try to get those covered up, um, but the second is to give us a little more, uh, defense against the tides.
It'll be two inches, isn't it?
Creek flooding, it's an inch and a half.
Just hold that for a second.
Yeah, hold that for a second. I'll chat with you after the meeting. How's that?
Yeah, we can't really do that, unfortunately.
Um, so it's only an inch and a half, and, and I was a little, I've expressed displeasure with that and, and there may be some room for conversation there. The good news, bad news, is that while these contracts are gonna happen, the road's gonna be done, yada, yada. Uh, the timing is very suspect. For some reason, D O T gave this contractor a, a contract, and I have a copy of it, that basically allows them to do it anytime, between now and May of two thousand twenty four. Um, and, and the S C D O T says, well, we will, we'll only get a very short notice as to when they intend to do it. Wow, very interesting. So, maybe we could have some room to chat about that in terms of timing, but, but the good news is that gives us an opportunity maybe to explore some of your ideas, Tom, and see if there is an appetite for improving the height and giving us a little bit more flood protection, uh, as you're thinking about. So, and Doug, I guess it's gonna happen tomorrow. Um, so, I mean, as I said, good news.
Just to piggyback on your comments, when they were marking, you see the road's been marked for it. Um, and I'd asked them what the different markings were, he said they have to come in and do patchwork prior to the, the paving. Um, and I guess another company does that.
Okay.
Um, and I said, any timing on that, and he said that can't, it has to be sometime after March, because they have to wait until the last freeze is possible, in order to do that, but it looks like at least some of those potholes and dips in the road and breaks in this asphalt should be repaired prior to the, uh, the paving at least.
Good, good, good. Now, I think it'll be a, a, a great improvement if we could get us some additional height for flood protection, that would be, that would be absolutely awesome. They will include, um, at least a portion of pavilion where we dug that up for the pipe, so that is, that's on their map.
That's gonna need up now.
Yeah, it is. And that's.
And what was the value of the contract?
Uh, he would, didn't share that with me.
Can I add a comment? What you're saying?
Of course.
I didn't know if you were done.
I'm done.
You're done. Uh, I kind of know where you're going, so I'm, I'm gonna help kind of add to this, um. Tom mentioned that you didn't have a lot of time to talk about it, but we spent a considerable time last week. Uh, he's got a great deal of experience and knowledge and know-how with this type of thing with road paving. Obviously, the South Carolina D O T, they go about their business the way they do things, that, and that's just the way it is. But, um, if there is a window of time, you know, repaving the road just to make it nicer and less bumpy on the cars is, we don't, Paulies doesn't really need that. I mean, it'd be great, it'd be great for the roads to be smoother, but what we need is some thoughtful consideration on, w- when we have these king tides, how high is it going? And can we raise the road to some degree that's reasonable? And what was explained to me by, uh, a member from S C D O T, that if you raise the road more than, I can't remember how, eight inches or seven inches, then people have to repave their driveways and do everything else, because you're gonna have a big bump and they come back up. Okay, there's a lot of reasons not to do things, but there's also reasons to be thoughtful about it, because that's, whatever they're spending, however it's been funded, that's a lot of money, so why can't we take a breath, step back? We don't want to stop progress, we also don't want to waste money. To me, this is a waste of money. So I would advocate that, uh, the right people for South, uh, for S C D O T in this county to meet with a member from town council and Tom Malden to just explore, let's pop, let's pump the brakes a little bit, and let's do this thoughtfully. And I think Tom and others obviously can lend some, some knowledge to this situation. So if you guys are good with that, I'd be happy to take the lead on that and try to set something up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I was just gonna add, uh, on a related subject, again to Tom's earlier comments, um, I'd be happy to, sit with him and go over and make sure he's fully aware of the, the flood mitigation program that we already have going on right now in terms of our, uh, storm drains and the fact that we've got, water from the creek backing up through the storm drains in a number of locations.
Except we used to.
We finished the pilot program very successful, we've got another one down by Sarah's house we're hoping to do this year, and, any ideas that Tom or anyone else has in terms of how we think we can do that and do better, do faster? Um, it would be, um, much appreciated. So I'm available for, to give you my little pitch that I gave to these guys earlier when they agreed to do this, so, happy to share that with you.
Awesome, thank you, Rocky. Anybody else have comments? Or motions?
I'm making the motion that we adjourned.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all very much. Did it get hot in here as I just said?
No, it did.